All right, I could get a motion that we in, that we only discussed those items, one item we went into closed session for. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A, real property acquisition disposition, senior center.
So moved.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll now move on to the Pledge of Allegions led by Councilman Clark and invocation by Councilman East.
Pledge of Allegions to the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, thank you for your continued grace and mercy. We ask that you would guide us in all matters this evening and please grant us wisdom and may all we do be pleasing to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, I'd like to welcome the guests and visitors here and online. Thank you for being here. Okay, there's no modifications to public session, so we'll move on to the public hearing. First public hearing we have, well, only public hearing we have is Verizon Cell Tower at 3610 Robinson Track. Scott, could you tell them what this is about?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this public hearing is regarding leasing a small portion of the town-owned land at 3610 Robinson Track. I guess that's the road it's on. There are two water towers there currently that the town owns and uses, and it has some additional land there that Verizon would like to put a tower on. Verizon has gone through the rezoning or special use permit process through the county because this land is located in the county, and that has been approved or granted. So now they are wanting to lease the land from the town, and we're having this public hearing today for a public notice of us disposing of land through a lease, and that's the purpose of the public hearing today.
Okay. The council have questions?
What's the term of the lease?
It is five years, I believe, and then renewable for four additional terms. We're still working on those terms. We don't have the lease yet ready for approval by you. So this is the public hearing to dispose of the land. So they proposed a price that we're not sure is fair market value, but we're trying to figure that out at the moment. So I discussed with the town, we just got the lease yesterday, or at least I put my eyes on it yesterday and had a discussion with the town manager and Mr. Ost regarding the lease and the terms. So I have comments to send back to Verizon or their representative in trying to negotiate those terms out to bring a lease back to you later. Or if the council so prefers, you can approve the, authorize us to enter the lease upon final approval by the town manager and the town attorney if you want to. Otherwise, we bring it back to you for approval once we have the terms finalized.
I can add to that, Mayor, and counsel, it's a, it's a monthly revenue, a minimum monthly revenue of $900 a month, and it'll increase by 1.5%, I believe, annually. We're looking, well, Scott will actually be looking to see if that's competitive in the market. We're also gonna ask for space on that tower, future space, and insurance, do all the necessary things. All of you familiar with where it, where it would be located at? There's two tanks that were eventually taken offline, so.
Are both of those tanks offline now?
No, they're not off yet, but they're like just weeks away from being offline.
Okay. And we don't have any, do we have any other leases at that location, other cell towers?
Not sure.
Would the lease preclude us from getting other cell towers?
The current draft, yes, on that tract of land, yeah. But that is a comment I'm asking is why would you prevent us from, other than just competition to them?
Sure.
And if we're gonna do that, you need to pay us for it. Is that part of the $900 a month, or is there?
An additional.
Money.
And then would that, also, the other question I have is, we just built that brand-new tank up closer to Loving Field. Would that preclude us from entering into a lease on other property that we own? Okay, just that one tract?
Just this one tract.
Okay. Those are all my questions, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then I will open the public hearing. If there's any public questions, as there aren't.
My name is Joel Burchett, Sr. Some of you I know, some of you have not met me. I decided to run for town council, went and secured my.
Is this about the public hearing?
General comments.
Okay, this is later.
Okay.
This, this is just for the public hearing of that, I'm sorry.
Well, I just got 30 seconds. I'll bring you back up then.
All right. Just, just related to the, the cell tower.
Yeah, yeah.
The disposition of that public property.
Okay, so as there are no comments, I will close the public, public hearing. And then are there any other questions before we move forward on that? Make a motion, either.
So the question, Mr. Mayor, is whether you want to authorize the town manager to execute the lease upon final terms being approved by the town manager and the town attorney, or if you'd like to have the lease, once it's in final form, come back to you all for final review. So that's up to you. We're good either way, you know, so. And you meet twice a month, so it's not like it's a big deal to come back to you, so.
Based off previous, what we've previously done, it would come back to us.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's been our practice. I think that's a good idea, so that we're actually paying attention to things.
Yeah, we're with you. Sometimes if it's more final form, I'd probably recommend the other way, but.
Yeah.
We're not, you know, I don't think we're that close to being final with some key terms, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, so what are we looking for here, just an approval of?
Essentially, you've held the public hearing, which is required under the code, right?
Yeah.
To dispose of the real estate. So that's been done.
So we don't need to do anything?
You don't really need to do anything.
Okay, we can just leave it be?
When the lease is ready, we'll put it on the agenda and ask for your approval at that time.
Then we'll do the vote on it then.
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
All right.
Motion withdrawn if there's any discussion about that.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is Resolution 2024-32, appointing Nathan Smithers as the acting building official. Mr. Day, would you like to?
Yeah, Mr. Tim Hale is out on FMLA leave. He's expected to be out maybe a month, give or take some. But I've gotta appoint somebody and notify DHCD who is in that capacity. And Mr. Smithers, who works in engineering, will be assuming that position. He is also gonna be training for at least two weeks, probably another, probably another week left, a little more than a week left. With Tim Masters, Tim Masters is a retired building official from Rattler. So. Cut and drive pretty short.
Okay.
Fix in and we're DHD requirements.
All right, so if someone would like to make a?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2024-32, appointing Nathan Smithers as acting building official.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye. All right. I got to vote. All right, now we'll move on to the public comments section. I have a speaker's note here, so Joel Burchett, if you'd like to come up and, and you've told us who you are, so you're fine.
All right, thank you. We thought you was gonna buy the tire.
And I did, just so you know, I did the same thing before I got, right before I got on council, so. Just, you also need to share us your address, that's one of the.
Yeah, again, my name is Joel Burchett, Sr. Lifelong resident of the town. I live at 120 Northwood Terrace. I've lived in a couple of different areas of town. Anyway, I decided to run for town council for a number of reasons, which I'll get into a couple of them here in just a second, but I secured quite a bit more than I needed. I wanted to go to all areas of the town, get citizens' input when asking for them to sign my petition, and I did so. I did that. I probably visited 160, at least, households from all areas of town, from Highland Terrace to Hermosa Drive, Robson Track, to Bain Bridge, from the Ballpark, you name it, I was there. And I sat in a few of the houses from one to two hours, just listening, getting people's input. And most of them had the same concerns. No matter where they live, they had three or four predominant issues that they want to see the town tackle and do something about. Number one is the entrances to the town, especially on Route 11. We all know that we had a battle over the Volkswagens. We got that somewhat cleared up. Now we need to do the next step and take care of the dilapidated, falling-down buildings, trash, weeds, overgrown. Toward the end of April, I had a, I had a class reunion and had a lot of people that hadn't been here for years, and I'm sorry to say that I found myself apologizing for the appearance of the town. One lady who lives in Nashville, used to be a prominent business owner here, or her parents did, she said, Joel, what's happened? Said, what is wrong? And I had one word for her. After I thought a little while, I said, Judy, I'd have to say apathy. People have an apathetic point of view, or no point of view. They, they have, a lot of them have been, become, unfortunately, become accustomed to mediocrity, and mediocrity cannot be the norm. We have to tackle these issues. We can't expect new business to come here. If, if the first thing they see is dilapidated buildings, trash, unkempt property, for we are not enforcing the laws that we have on the books or the codes, people don't wanna come here when they see that. They wanna see a, most everybody wants to see a nice place, they wanna have a clean town, a safe town, and a, a place they can be proud of. And we can get there, but we need to work on it. We need to work on it. The other thing that just about everyone discussed with me was dilapidated structures. I've got, I won't go into all of them now, but I've got one in each, each quadrant of town that I have looked at, and they have been sitting there for years vacant. Well, I, I will use, I will use two. One is the old hospital on Randolph Avenue. People that live in that area should not be subjected to that. They should not be. And I'll go back to the old Barker Dodge, which was later became on by a gentleman from out of town who, y'all know who he is. Those people shouldn't have to look at that every day. It needs to be corrected, and I'm not saying it's gonna be easy, but if we have, if we have rules and regulations and laws and codes that we all have to live by, the owner of that property should have to go by the same rules that we do. And if we don't have adequate rules and codes and laws in place, then we have a town attorney that can help us get the, get the things that we do need so that we can tackle that from a legal standpoint, if necessary. And of course, the other thing is illegal activities. That's the only word I'm gonna use for it, but if you're around town as much as I am, we know, I know where the problems are. I've had, I've had three different residents of this town tell me, this house right here, there's constant traffic, day and night, and I've seen it with my own eyes. That needs to be addressed, and I would look at you to help us address that. And of course, the last one is the transient population. That's a tough one. I feel sorry for people that are in the condition that a lot of, a lot of those folks are in. I don't know what we can do, but we can sure try to do something. On the other hand, I wanna talk about a couple of positives. I see some positive things happening in town. I'm sure you folks have been involved in some of that, if not all of it. And I met, I was, I was very pleased to, to meet several new people that moved here from out of state. One gentleman, he bought a home here in town, saw it online. I may have told you about it, Mr. Collins. I won't call you Shannon, but. At any rate, he's a retired military man. His wife is an author. I think she's working on her fifth book now. Good people. They moved here because they liked the looks of the town, and to me, that's positive. You know, they like the, the small town and I met a couple other senior citizens that moved here from out of town, out of state, one up in our neighborhood, and they're, they're really, it, it gives me hope to see, you know, to see people care enough that they wanna come here and, and hopefully help to make things better. So again, just want you to know, maybe if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, I'll be joining some of you and looking forward to working with you, again, if I get the votes. And I promise you, if I am elected, these will be some of my top priorities. So again, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's the only one we had, so then we'll move to the consent agenda. So up for your consideration is June 18th, 2024 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Someone will make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the Town Council Meeting Minutes for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Upstain.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye. Next on the agenda is new business. Mr. Day?
Mayor, this is a new section that we're gonna be building on in the future. I don't have anything for there tonight, but it will, will have topics in the future under that section.
All right, thank you. All right. Now we'll move to the council comments. So first up is Mr. East.
I don't have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, Mr. Clark?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dawson?
Actually, I, I only really have a request, and I figured I'd ask it this way, just to make sure that it, see if it was kosher with everybody else, and we all get more emails than, than we can handle usually. But would it be possible, if anybody's, or if everybody's comfortable with it, if we started receiving the meeting minutes and agendas by email for Planning Commission or the Housing Authority or EDA boards as, as things move forward, and, and have those things all come to, their council emails as well?
Absolutely.
To make it possible to, to, to keep better informed on those, on how those things are on, that may benefit all of us?
Yeah, I like that.
Is there, is there, is anybody?
No, I think that's a great idea. I mean, and I think it doesn't have to be like immediately, you know, it could, it could be a summary or something like that, or, you know, compendium if that's easier.
I assume that it was probably going directly to those boards' emails or, you know, at that time, if we could just be copied, you know?
Absolutely, yeah. I, I like it. There's a, you know, we've talked about some areas of inefficiency that we're working on administratively, and one of those areas is communicating with the other boards that we have in play, and the public hearing that we had, that we had a couple of months ago, or a month ago, I'd like to forget about, and I'd like to have never been part of, and that was my fault, and we'll fix it, but, so we will be working together in the future to try to fix some of those communication issues that we've got. So absolutely, we'll make it happen.
Thank you. That's it. Mr. Ratliff?
I, I just a few things. Had a chance to go see Splash Pad today. I talked to some parents down there, they really love it. It's, I think it's been an asset, I don't know, about five, six kids in there. Finally got to see how it worked, because the water kept cutting off. I, I never seen it down before, they really enjoyed it. I think that's a big asset to it. And, and one thing I would touch on, like Mr. Burchett was talking about there a while ago, and he hit on everything that we kinda work on. You'll find out, Mr. Burchett, even with their best attorneys that we have, the bottleneck will be at the court. It took us 10 years, am I right, on the vans?
Took longer than it should have.
Just to get it in court.
I have a wonder response back to these, and I've told, excuse me, I've told Shannon this. I used to work for a guy, and he told me, it's about the attitude that you have going in when you address a problem. We can accomplish almost anything we set out to do. Pull out the no card, put in the yes card. It depends a lot on the frame of mind and the attitude you have going in. I'm not saying you guys don't have that. I'm just saying, if you recognize a roadblock, identify it up front, find a way to lock it down or go around.
Oh, absolutely.
We, we can get it done.
Absolutely. Well, when we, like I said, when we started on the vans, you know, he had as many attorneys as town had.
I actually sat in on a video conference.
So that, that's one thing, and the houses that are up there, I'm sure they're already in the, the works. Once again, with the best attorneys you got, the judge will only hear it when he wants to hear it. So anyway, good luck. I think you'll do fine.
I'll bet.
You'll do, you'll do good, so. That's all I have, no, thank you.
Joel, that's all we can ever do, is do our best. Mr. Reese?
So a couple things. Last time I talked about the new rail station, so they got an update from the New River, New River Valley Regional Commission. So the details of the new rail station are actually even better. It's going, the, the station, which is really just a platform, it's gonna be built on Norfolk Southern property, which is excellent for the purpose of our citizens, because they don't have to go through the process of a public entity acquiring land, and then they're building on their own property, so they don't have to go through all of this. So it hopefully means that we might see a station in Christiansburg before 2028, which will be great, which was the original plan. Hopefully even, maybe even by 2026, although, don't, don't quote me on that. And, and then there'll eventually will be a more full-size, you know, station there, but if you've ever been, if you've ever rode the train out of Roanoke, it'll be similar to that station setup. And to reiterate Mr. Ratliff's comments, we have, I think in the past five years, really stepped up our code enforcement. I know Carla Hodge, who's our code enforcement officer, has been extremely diligent in, you know, the things that, under the code of Virginia, we're allowed to do. Unlike many other jurisdictions, Virginia really restricts the ability of government entities from interfering with private property. That's a, that's an issue that not just the town, but everybody in the Commonwealth faces. It makes it hard to, especially in our case, where we're much more limited in resources than other jurisdictions. If you wanna knock a building down or renovate it because it's dilapidated, you gotta put it out of your own pocket, and that, that can be $50,000 to $100,000 for a good-sized building. So, you know, it, you're, you're absolutely right. It's what you put your mind to, but we have a limited amount of resources, and so that's one of the issues. The other thing I wanted to bring up is about what you referred to as a transient population. So as part of the Regional Commission, I've, I've been partied to certain presentations by people, including the New River Community Action, the Housing and Homelessness Outreach Coordinator, and I was in touch with her this week, actually, and I have been, last year, I just, just looking at it, it's almost exactly a year ago, about coming in doing a presentation on what kind of strategies they have. One of the things they're working on is what they call a supportive housing structure, which would be a place, I think they've actually already got a site, not in town, but in the New River Valley, where they would have services for folks who either are struggling with mental health, substance use, or other issues that lead to chronic homelessness. And also, I think we could invite her and Dr. Bissel from the New River Health District, who's also working on these issues, because it's really a public health issue primarily, and I think it might be worth us spending some time at a future meeting. I don't know if, July might be a little soon, but I think certainly in the next month or two, and then give us some real strategies of what other communities have done, because there are ways to address the issues. It's about how you allocate your resources, as Mr. Burchett's line, and I think that we can, we can address this using a long-term proactive strategy that can actually alleviate this problem, instead of just kinda move it around, which is what I think the historical practice has been, not just here, but all over. So I'll be in touch with Mr. Day about that.
That's it? Okay. Only thing I have is, had a couple citizens contact me about the convenience center being closed on Saturday, since it is a long weekend for a lot of people, and that's when they could take stuff, and is there any way we can work around that? Just asking. So that's the only thing that I had tonight, so we'll move forward to yours, and you get to talk about.
I do have one thing I wanna say.
You have.
Mr. Burchett, I think you're exactly who we need on council. Thank you for the, for the information.
Maybe I'll get elected.
I think you will.
I think you got a real good chance.
Appreciate you stepping up, though.
All right. Mr. Day?
Okay, so just a couple announcements I think you're already aware of. Thursday and Friday of this week, the town offices are closed, and the centers slated to be closed on Saturday, July 6th. I'll talk to staff and Kim, and we'll figure out if we can find a way to, to man that facility. The other thing I wanted to talk to council about was some of the concerns that I, that I've got, that I have, that I have briefly voiced, and one of the biggest concerns that I've got is obviously your distribution system and the quality of the water plant. It's, it's putting out top-notch water. We've, we've all saw that with the awards from the Health Department. However, however sustaining that is, is making me just a little nervous because of my knowledge of the system. So I'll be, I'll be working with staff and also this council to try to, to try to split up the meetings that we have monthly, maybe turn one of them into more of a work session. So being in local government for probably too long, 20, 20-something, 26 years in local government to some degree, the water system is the backbone of your economy, obviously, and obviously there's other elements out there that affect that. But I think it's very important that when we get to next, next budget season in December, that you're, you're at least up to speed to where you need to be at in, in order to make decisions on how, how we proceed, because those tough questions are absolutely on the way. And I wanna thank both Kim, sometimes it goes unnoticed, but Kim in Public Works and, you know, the, the work that they're doing cosmetically in, in the field, they picked up. When I first started here in February, I let her know that I really have a, a high presence when it comes to cosmetics, and I believe that any business, if they have an opportunity to relocate in this economy, they're looking for curb appeal, and, and I do put curb appeal at a high priority. And as I learn more about Pulaski outside of the town hall, we'll improve. And as I learn more about Pulaski outside of the town hall, uh, we'll improve on that in the future. But she's done a, an amazing job, um, with what she's got. We've had some situations that came up that were unfortunate, like a tractor getting hit, and I think our grass got high enough there one time on Route eleven. But I think we, we taking care of that and addressed it. Um, I also want to thank Chief. Um, this is, this issue that, that I've been working on, and we briefly talked about it tonight. And y'all have received a multitude of emails from me, and I'm gonna keep pounding you, um, uh, with the, uh, with the homeless situation. It's, it's, uh, it's a big problem. It's a, it's a vast problem. And when I say problem, I don't mean that they're a problem. I mean, there are situations that you can view there on every aspect that are legit and real. Uh, and, you know, we need to, we do need to continue to proceed forward. Um, we are going to create, um, a committee of people from, from every viewpoint. And, um, but I can tell you that it's been here, I talked to Dawson, we, we went on a trip to Richmond not too long, not, well, it'd been four months ago, maybe. And, and we were talking about that issue. And one, one thing that I've learned, that it just didn't happen overnight. I think, uh, Dawson actually alluded to it, may have been, may have been here twenty-five, thirty years ago. It did not happen all of that, but I can make you this promise. It's not an easy road. It's absolutely, bar none, an easy road. If it was, the previous thirty years of town councils and managers and police departments would have solved it. Because it is impacting the community, the citizens, and, um, and it, when I say impacted, again, I don't want anybody to throw a political round at me here. Uh, I, I mean, it's, it, it's an issue on, on all levels. They all have legit, legit points. But handling that with the laws that we have is very, very, very sensitive. And, uh, we're going to do everything we can to address it to the best of our abilities and use both state and federal laws to do it. But yet, we're going to do it sensitively. We're going to do it with an understanding that, that they don't want to be there. Um, so we're going to handle it to the best of our ability, but I want to applaud Chief. I know all week, I don't say all week, for, uh, for months. Uh, we have been looking at it, taking samples here and there, getting a feel for the area, and we'll continue to do that. Um, but I, I do want to thank Chief and his team for the, for the work that they've done. I've talked to Jill Neese, and she's actually agreed to sit on a committee. And she's also mentioned people at the state level that are going to join in, and so we're going to put it out there. We're going to publicize it, put it on website, Facebook, and, you know, we're going to organize a collective group of professionals in all areas. Um, and, uh, you know, we want everybody, uh, that we can to have an organized meeting. Um, I don't need three, I don't need a hundred people there, people there, but we are going to do what we can to, to address it. But I can assure you that it will not happen in two or three years. If it would, if it could, and it would have done already happened, you know? So I'm not going to look at it as if I'm better than any other previous manager you've had. I'm not going to view it that boldly. Um, I know it's an issue, and we're going to continue to punch forward. So, if you got any questions about it, I'm going to continue to bombard you on emails and what we're doing. And, uh, if you got any questions about it, just let me know, and we'll keep firing, firing rounds. So, um, also, I, I'll, I have access to the work that previous management has done in this community. And when it comes to the signs around town, the cosmetics, I, I think I can stand up and say that my predecessor, uh, led this, this council. And this council worked with her to do things that hadn't been done in probably fifty years. And, uh, you're to be recognized for that success. Uh, don't take it lightly. It might fall on light feet from time to time, but we're going to continue that push, and we'll continue to work on areas. And, uh, the mayor and I had a conversation not too long ago about a, a building right at the intersection of town, right in the middle of town. That, uh, needed to be addressed, some signage right there. So we'll, it's an everyday job, dilapidated buildings. There's approximately a hundred twenty-six empty lots in town. And most of them, you can put a combine on, um, and, and the grass is that high. And, uh, you know, I know, I know what the law requires when it comes to cutting grass. I've got to notify you. I've got to give you ten days. I've got to give you thirty days. I know what it takes to do it. By the time that we're able to send somebody in there and cut grass, you can actually bail it, and that's the law. I can't just, you know, so, um, I, I know the complexity of it, and, um, um, the laws are, are changing every day, and we try to keep up with it. But, long story short, that, uh, that, those work sessions are going to reflect a lot of, a lot of different practices that we're going to try to implement. Um, and, and local government, you have to be proactive and sort of reactive, and a lot of times, we find ourselves being reactive. I don't mind getting a speeding ticket. I don't want to go to jail, but I believe every now and then, we got to try, try to change and work together and try to accomplish something in a different route. And that's what we're going to try to do. So, I appreciate it, and I'm glad to be here, and I know it's a, it's a tough time, but I also want to let you know that you're not. This town is not the Lone Ranger to any town in southwest Virginia. I can promise you that every single town is going through the same issues we are. So there's a budget, there's a fine line, you got an economy that's doing this, and inflation that's doing that. And I promise you, it doesn't take a physics analyst to know those lines never cross. So, when we look at water rates, and when we look at sewer rates, we look at them politically on a three- or four- or five-year outlook. But your manager is looking at them with glasses of a depleting population. So you're not looking at it like it'll last, and we're, you know, we're not Alexander, we're not Fair, we're not Charlotte, where they're growing. And you can put a three-year rate hike in, and it'll last ten years. We don't look at it that way. I've never seen too many councils that can adopt a five-year outlook on a, on a water rate hike. Most of them politically want to hold off and look at it every couple of years for obvious reasons. But, uh, it's a tough market out there. Um, and contrary to popular belief, uh, we're going to do it. We're going, we're going to make it happen. And, uh, it'll be, it'll be some hard roads and black eyes and bruises, but I just want to let y'all know, I'm here for the long haul. And, uh, we're going to work together to make Pulaski, continue to make Pulaski a better place to be. That's all I've got, Mayor. It's probably too much, but that's all I've got.
Well said. Thank you, sir. All right, with that, just a reminder, our next council meeting is July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, closed session at five thirty. Open session begins at seven. Have nothing else on the agenda, so I declare this meeting adjourned.